Good morning, everyone. My name is Elliot Payne. I'm the president of Minneapolis City Council. And before we convene our meeting, we have presentations of honorary resolutions. We are pleased to welcome guests to this space to share in these presentations before taking up our agenda. First up is a resolution recognizing Child Safety and Protection Month presented by Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody, and welcome. Our first honorary resolution today is to reaffirm the city's commitment to protecting the health of children and recognizing November as National Child Safety and Protection Month. You'll see this theme a couple more times this morning. I'll read the resolution and then I'm going to pass it off first to the person receiving that resolution, which is Kaitlyn from Hennepin Healthcare. We also have up here with us members, people from our Health Department and also our Youth Coordinating Board. So, whereas the month of November is recognized as National Child Safety and Protection Month, dedicated to recognizing the unique potential dangers children face in their everyday lives and taking tangible steps of prevention against those challenges. And whereas the goal of National Child and Safety Protection Month is to teach caregivers, friends, and families how to see the world from a child's perspective and make sure they stay safe. And whereas children and toddlers explore the world by putting things in their mouths, they are especially vulnerable to accidental poisoning. And whereas between 2018 and 2023, there was a 176% increase in reports of potential cannabis poisoning, with the reported poisonings of children under five increasing from 7 to 24% of those reported poisonings in that time. Whereas the state of Minnesota legalized adult-use cannabis in 2023, creating new opportunities for health education, regulation, and responsible use, but also new challenges in protecting children from accidental exposure, access, and normalization of use. And whereas legalization has led to wider availability of cannabis products, including edibles and concentrates that may resemble candy, snacks, beverages, increasing the risk of unintentional ingestion. Whereas the city of Minneapolis is committed to advancing public health and safety through education and prevention related to cannabis and other substances. Whereas the Minneapolis Health Department is taking steps to protect children from potential harm by launching a Safe Storage of Cannabis and Other Substances Campaign to encourage caregivers to store cannabis and other substances safely out of reach. And whereas by recognizing National Child Safety and Protection Month in the context of Minnesota's evolving cannabis landscape, the city reaffirms its dedication to safeguarding the health, safety, and well-being of all children in Minneapolis. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council hereby affirm our commitment to protecting the health of children and recognizing November as National Child Safety and Protection Month. Thank you. We have Kaitlyn here from Hennepin Healthcare who's going to describe her work and share a few words. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, everyone. So, as mentioned, my name is Kaitlyn Hansen. I work for Hennepin Healthcare and I'm the trauma prevention specialist over there. So, we are a Level One Pediatric Center as well as a Level One Adult Center. So, we're committed not only to treating traumatic injuries, but also trying to prevent them as well. And so what I do is take a look at our data and all of our patients coming in and then use education, resources, programming, legislative action to try to prevent these injuries from happening in the first place. Because what we find is, you know, even if you do heal from your physical injuries, there's always that emotional scar for what you have and you and your family have had to go through from this trauma. So, thank you again for reaffirming this. It's an honor to receive this and I'm very excited to promote the safe cannabis storage through our events in the future, starting with our baby safety shower on Friday. So, very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you so much, council member. My name's Evelyn Carberry. I'm Cannabis and Substance Use Prevention Coordinator at the Minneapolis Health Department and just wanted to say that we have launched a safe storage campaign after seeing the numbers of increases in accidental childhood poisonings over the last several years. So, we are promoting safe cannabis use by storing cannabis and other substances locked up tight and out of sight. And we appreciate the city's commitment to ensuring the safety of children as well.
Super. Thank you. We're going to get together for a photo commemorating this. And as, I'm just excited to stand with you all because you guys are doing the work on promoting safe storage. So, here we go. Next up?
Next up, we are recognizing Fraud Awareness Week.
There we go.
Good morning, Ann. Welcome. I'm excited to have our city auditor joining me with our full audit team as we recognize Fraud Awareness Week in the city of Minneapolis. Whereas the city of Minneapolis is committed to ethical governance, transparency, and accountability in the stewardship of public resources and the delivery of services to its residents. And whereas 2025 marks the 25th Annual Observance of International Fraud Awareness Week, an initiative led by the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, ACFE, to raise a global awareness about the impact of fraud and the importance of prevention and detection. And whereas the ACFE estimates that organizations lose approximately 5% of their annual revenue to fraud, representing a significant threat to the effective use of public funds and the trust placed in government institutions. And whereas fraud underpins public confidence, increases operational costs, and diverts resources away from essential services, making prevention and early detection vital to protecting the public interest. And whereas the Office of City Auditor plays a critical role in promoting integrity and accountability across city operations through independent audits, advisory services, proactive risk assessments, and fraud investigations. And whereas fraud prevention and detection are shared responsibilities across all city departments and collaboration is essential to maintaining a culture of integrity and accountability. And whereas employee tips are the most common method of detecting fraud and the city of Minneapolis encourages all employees to remain vigilant and informed about fraud risks and reporting mechanisms. And whereas the city of Minneapolis provides accessible and confidential tools for reporting suspected fraud, ensuring that all employees and residents can play a role in protecting public resources. And whereas Fraud Awareness Week provides an opportunity to recognize the importance of ethical conduct in public service and to reaffirm the city's commitment to a culture of integrity and accountability. And whereas Fraud Awareness Week, the Office of the City Auditor exhibits strong leadership in fraud prevention, detection, and education with ongoing efforts to safeguard public resources and promote ethical governance. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council recognize November 16th through the 22nd, 2025, as Fraud Awareness Week in the city of Minneapolis and encourage all city employees and residents to support fraud awareness efforts, report suspected fraud, and contribute to a transparent and trustworthy local government. Thank you. Mr. Timmerman, would you like to share any words?
I would just like to thank our partners across the city, especially in finance and those who help in the city attorney's office. We triage reports and there is easy reporting on the city of Minneapolis's website. So, members of the public and city employees can all report concerns or suspicions of fraud that can be investigated. So, thank you very much to all of our partners. Really appreciate you being here today. And thank you for recognizing Fraud Awareness Week.
Absolutely. Let's all squeeze in for a photo. We got to squeeze in between these two black lines right here. Next, we will welcome Councilmember Kosky for World Children's Day.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, good morning. My name is Andrea Jenkins, Ward Eight City Council Member. And I'm so honored to bring forth this resolution, recognizing World Children's Day. Whereas, November 20th, 2025 marks the 36th anniversary of the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child, UNCRC. And whereas, out of 196 eligible member nations of the United Nations, the United States is the only nation that has not yet ratified the UNCRC. And whereas the Child Friendly Cities Initiative, CFCI, was launched globally in 1996 to actualize the rights of children, recognizing the direct role of local governments and mayors play in supporting and advocating for children and young people. And whereas on November 20th, 2019, the Minneapolis City Council passed a resolution to reaffirm the city's historic support, beginning with Mayor Don Frazier in 1989 of the UNCRC. And pursue designation as a child-friendly city through the United Nations International Children's Emergency Fund, UNICEF USA. And whereas Mayor Jacob Fry signed the Memorandum of Understanding with UNICEF USA on February 14th, 2020, resulting in Minneapolis becoming the second child-friendly city in the United States. And whereas the Minneapolis Youth Coordinating Board and the Minneapolis Health Department are leading Minneapolis's efforts to become the first city in the United States to be a re-designated, I'm sorry, to be re-designated as a child-friendly city in accordance with the four overall goals enshrined in UNCRC. Number one, children should be free from discrimination. Two, government policies should be based on the best interests of the child. Three, children should survive and develop their full potential. And number four, children's views and perspectives are important. And whereas this effort undertaking in recognition of the diversity of experience, culture, perspective, and nationally represented in the youth of the city of Minneapolis is guided by the framework set forth by the Convention on the Rights of the Child, which is celebrated on World Children's Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize that Thursday, November 20th, 2025 is World Children's Day in Minneapolis and that the residents of Minneapolis are invited to recognize World Children's Day by learning more about the United Nations Convention on the Rights of the Child. Thank you. So, I just want to offer an opportunity to say a few words, particularly from Ann, from the Youth Coordinating Board.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins and members of the Minneapolis City Council. Councilmember Jenkins is our board chair from the Youth Coordinating Board and Councilmember Kosky is a member of our board. So, I'm very pleased that I have been able to work with them the last several years. So, on behalf of the Child Friendly Cities Executive Committee, who you see represented here, some of us, I accept the resolution. We'll take that back and have it framed and hung. We're very proud of the work that we have been able to do in Minneapolis and we're very proud to be the second city designated child-friendly and the first city going forward for our second designation in the United States. There are about 3,000 cities in the world who have the designation, but in the United States, there's only two. Well, there's three actually. But we're the first to do a second designation. And I think at this time in our country, it is very important to lift up our children and their rights. It is really critical that we remember them and that we understand and really work for them and understand that our policies and our government needs to be centered on them. And that is what we bring to the table, a reminder and some work around our children and helping to center them. Because they are not remembered all the time and they're not thought of always as valuable. They're sometimes thought of as disposable and they are not. Someday, they are going to be sitting here. So, let us give them our best and that is the work that we are trying to do. So, on World Children's Day, let's remember that today, but every single day. And thank you to my colleagues for all of the incredible work they're doing now and some who have been doing this work for 30 or 40 years. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to share any words? No? Well, I guess we'll gather for a photo and I'll let Ann hold this lovely resolution.
Up is the Transgender Day of Remembrance with Councilmember Jenkins.
Oh, boy. Here they come. Hey, Shore. How are you?
Got a resolution for you.
Hey. Hello, everyone. All right. All right. So, here we go. Once again, with this resolution observing November 20th as Transgender Day of Remembrance. And last night, I had an opportunity to drive past the 35W Bridge and it was all lit up in pink and blue. Whereas sadly and inhumanely, at least 55 transgender and gender expansive people have already been killed in the United States in the past year, including through gun and interpersonal violence. And I just want to stop and make a commentary because the term "at least 55" is an estimate. We really don't know how many transgender or gender nonconforming people have been murdered because the society doesn't always recognize people's gender identities as such. Whereas we face an epidemic of violence against transgender women of color in the United States, with Black and Latinx transgender women representing a vast majority of these fatalities and experiencing violence at disproportionately higher rates. And whereas too often murders and violent attacks go unreported or misreported. Transgender women of color face violence every day and fear turning to law enforcement for help due to the furthering interactions of violence, victim blaming, stigmatization, and harmful characterization. And, Councilmember, do you want to share? Whereas transgender and gender nonconforming people whom we've lost in the last year due to violence perpetrated against them were neighbors, students, coworkers, friends, and family members whose lives were taken from their loved ones and from their communities. And whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance is also observed as Transgender Day of Resilience to celebrate the resilience and the power of trans and gender nonconforming people still living, still fighting for their safety, and still protecting each other. And whereas transgender and gender nonconforming people deserve the resources and protections necessary to be celebrated in life and not only in death. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby observe November 20th, 2025 as Transgender Day of Remembrance and acknowledging and mourning the lives of transgender and gender expansive people we've lost this year due to the violence and recognize that there is so much more work ahead and our duty to help create a safer, more equitable city for our transgender and gender nonconforming community members. Thank you. And if I might just take a moment, you know, this will be my last day of reading a resolution honoring Transgender Day of Remembrance. And, you know, as a transgender American, a Black transgender American, I'm an anomaly to be sitting here on this Minneapolis City Council. This is not an everyday occurrence. More of an everyday occurrence for Black transgender women is facing violence, facing homelessness, facing unemployment. And so, I want to just encourage you all to lift up a transgender person that you may know. Send them some love today. It's a very emotional day for this community. And, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. And I'll for Shore, Salkis, our program manager, to say a few words.
Thank you, Councilmember. Hi, everybody. Shore, Salkis. I'm the Two Spirit LGBTQIA Equity Manager here at the city. And following up Councilmembers' remarks is impossible. But what I will say is that we will have a space this afternoon at 4:00 at the Central Library to honor, to grieve, to be in community, and to honor this day with some performances and some speakers. So, please feel free to join us 4:00 at the Central Library this afternoon. And have a great day.
We got to take the picture. Do you want to hold the resolution?
Thank you very much.
I will keep this and
Next up, we will be recognizing 2025 International Employee Resource Group Day with Councilmember Vitah.
Yes, let's not be afraid to get in. Not at all. You're fine.
We might need to let.
Because we're going to have to.
Not yet. We'll just line up back here.
Okay.
Hello.
Good morning. Good morning. So, we're going to recognize International Employee Resource Group Day. I'm Latricia Vitah and I'm joined by lots of staff here at the city of Minneapolis. Thank you for being here this morning. Whereas Employee Resource Group, ERGs, are voluntary, employee-led groups that foster a diverse, inclusive workplace aligned with organizational mission, values, and goals. And whereas ERGs create safe spaces for employees to connect around shared identities, experience, and interests and promote greater awareness, understanding, and equity in the workplace. And whereas ERGs serve as vital contributors to the personal and professional development of employees by supporting leadership opportunities, mentorship, education, and community engagement. And whereas ERGs strengthen organizations by encouraging cross-cultural learning, improving recruitment and retention, and helping to build a more inclusive workplace culture. And whereas the city of Minneapolis recognizes the value and impact of ERGs in advancing equity, inclusion, and belonging across all sectors, including within the public workforce. And whereas International ERG Day, celebrated annually on the third Wednesday of November, provides an opportunity to honor the important work of ERGs around the world and to recommit creating inclusive environments where all employees feel seen, heard, and empowered. Now, Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby recognize International Employee Resource Group Day and commend the dedication, leadership, and contributions of Employee Resource Groups and their members within our city government and beyond. Thank you. Anybody want to say anything?
Thank you for this resolution today. ERGs really are a place where everyone can feel welcome, where everyone can feel a sense of belonging, where everyone can feel they have a voice. And so, for me, having been here for over 31 years, I was able to kind of see it grow from an idea to an actual reality. And so, that'll be one of the things that I've always really appreciate over the course of my career. So, thank you.
Anybody else want to say? No? All right, it's picture-taking time. So this is where it gets tricky. We're going to get in between these two black lines, maybe two rows.
Next, we will welcome up Councilmember Kosky to recognize Annunciation Catholic Church City Department support.
All right. All right, hello. Good morning, everyone. I'm Emily Kosky, Councilmember Ward 11, and colleagues and members of our community. Today, we bring forward a series of honorary resolutions recognizing the coordinated response of the city of Minneapolis departments following the tragic shooting at Annunciation Catholic Church and School on August 27th, 2025. These resolutions honor the extraordinary professionalism, compassion, and teamwork demonstrated across our entire enterprise. There are 25 departments, so we will not read every resolution. You're welcome. But I know Councilmember Palmisano would love to read each department's name.
I have the documents. I will read every word of these things later. These resolutions recognize all of these departments: the Police Department, the Fire Department, Emergency Management, the Health Department, Neighborhood and Community Relations, City Communications, the City Clerk's Office, Intergovernmental Relations, our 911 Emergency Center, Minneapolis 311, the Mayor's Office, Regulatory Services, the Incident Support Team, the City Attorney's Office, and the Civil Rights Department, the Minneapolis Convention Center, the Community Planning and Economic Development Group, Finance and Property Services, Human Resources, Information Technology, Neighborhood Safety, the Office of Community Safety, the Office of Public Service, Performance Management and Innovation, and Public Works.
Each of these departments played a vital role in supporting the victims, families, and the broader community during an unimaginable crisis. These resolutions collectively express our deepest gratitude to all city staff whose commitment and compassion reflect the very best of public service. And I'm honored to be standing up here today with so many of you who represent these departments. And I'm just grateful that Councilmember Palmisano and I had the support with all of you to support family and the community from Annunciation that is also here with us today. So I'd like to open it up if anybody would like to say a few words as well.
Hi, I'm Kristin Neville, and I'm a parent at Annunciation. Between myself and Michael Burt, we had five children that were in that church that morning. And what we saw that morning, from the moment that I arrived at the church at 8:35 a.m., which was quite early, and what I have seen every single day since then, and as I stand alongside of you, I am completely just with the utmost gratitude of what you were able to do that day. Teamwork is an incredible word for us to hold on to because I think that it is not just what happened on that day that we have to focus on, it's how we go forward together as a community that can be able to help stop that from happening ever again so that we can protect all of our children and all of you and our community at large. And so, thank you on behalf of Annunciation and our community and each of you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers Kosky and Palmisano, for authoring this very important resolution in that we need to be recognizing the incredible service that so many people throughout our city are doing every single day. But during emergencies, it's all the more important. The response at Annunciation, it didn't happen by accident. It happened because the people who are up here with us and the hundreds and even thousands of others throughout the city, they prepared. They did work. They coordinated. They made sure the channels of communication were set up, that first responders understood how incident command would function. All of this work culminated in a trip out to Emmitsburg, Maryland, where we all ran simulations. And those simulations and that practice helps us do better, and it quite literally saves lives. They worked alongside the incredible people at Annunciation, and I cannot thank you enough. We've heard stories that are flat-out courageous about what students, teachers, parents did in those most difficult moments. And I think the most beautiful part is in unity. Our whole city really rose to a very difficult challenge. I'm grateful to everybody, for councilmembers for recognizing all of this work, for our staff who stepped up. And whether you were ensuring that communication got out in a timely fashion, or you were running towards violence when so many of the rest of us would run in the other direction, the work you do matters. It matters. And in moments like this, it especially does. And so, thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for having us here today. And my name is Mike Moiski. I'm Harper's dad, also the father of Quinn Moiski, who made it out that day, thanks to all of you. This is my wife, Jackie, and we're beyond humbled and honored to be here amongst this room of heroes. And that's truly what you are. So thank you for everything you do, not just for our family and for getting Quinn out safely, but for what you did for our community and what you continue to do. I remember that morning, sorry, I'll get choked up, but I remember that morning seeing all the families come together. And when Jackie and I found out what happened to Harper, we were obviously devastated, hardest moment of our life. But then there were people in that room that I couldn't even recognize today probably because it was such a blur, that all had a function that allowed us to continue moving forward beyond that awful moment. And it's helped us out, and it continues to help us out. And the outreach that we get from many of you here today is a big part of our recovery. So thank you so much on behalf of Jackie and I and Quinn and our community for everything that you do. We're honored.
Thank you, Mike. All right, I don't know that we're going to be able to squish in for a photo here, but we will do our very best. Let's show them what unity looks like here.
Next, we will recognize Harper.
All right. All right. We are also here today recognizing the enduring light of Harper Lillian Moiski. Whereas Harper Lillian Moiski was born November 3rd, 2014, and from the very beginning radiated joy, curiosity, and courage that touched everyone who knew her. Whereas Harper was a bright, funny, and deeply kind child who asked big questions, spoke truth and conviction, and approached the world with her whole heart, a light entirely her own. Whereas Harper found joy and wonder in everything around her: the animals she adored, the trails she explored, the games she invented, and the people she loved, especially her little sister Quinn, her favorite playmate and forever friend. And whereas, her community witnessed extraordinary strength and unity in the days and weeks following her passing, as neighbors, classmates, and families across Minneapolis came together in love, grief, and solidarity. And whereas, from the love has grown a movement of conscious and compassionate change, a collective effort to carry forward her spirit of kindness, connection, and courage. And whereas Harper's family continues to honor her through community healing, advocacy, and creative acts of remembrance, remembering, reminding all of us that love is powerful and never leaves, it transforms. And whereas, her short life has already changed hearts, policies, and possibilities in Minneapolis and beyond, calling us to be brave, be bright, and be loud with our love. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Minneapolis do hereby honor and celebrate Harper Lillian Moiski, whose radiant life continues to illuminate our city's path towards compassion, courage, and community. That the mayor and city council do hereby declare November as Harper Lillian Moiski Month in the city of Minneapolis, inviting all residents to carry forward her spirit of kindness, connection, and joy. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city council hereby extend their deepest condolences and gratitude to Harper's family, friends, teachers, and community, together with their commitment to uphold the light that she shared, a light that didn't go out. It shifted. It moved into all the people who care and remains a light which continues to grow when we share it. May Harper's light continue to remind us that the measure of a society is found in how deeply it loves and protects its children. Well, it's been an honor to get to know both of you and for you to have shared Harper's light with me. And I'm grateful to be here with both of you today so that you can continue to share it across our entire city. So thank you so much. I felt it this weekend already at an event that you guys have started because her favorite sport is volleyball. And you could feel it in every, every movement, every, every action, every, every time somebody spoke. And I can't wait till when we continue to support Harper and say that November next year is Harper's month, that there will be more that we talk about because of the work that you guys have already started. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you again. This is beyond meaningful. Sorry, I feel like it's such a special item, I want to like hold it up here. But this means the world to us. And Emily, you've been incredible, as well as you, Mayor Frye, and everybody else in our community, and Shol and Rabbi Jason. You know, we are just continued to be humbled and honored. And the biggest thing that we want out of this and why we're so honored by, by having this, this platform right now is we just want to make sure that, that all of this had meaning behind it, right? If it doesn't, then I think it's a big miss on, on the community and our city, and so on, so forth. And it's just humbling to know, and we're proud to be a part of Minneapolis where we know we're going to take meaningful action to, to keep our kids safe. So thank you so much for honoring Harper in this way, and it's extremely important to us and meaningful, so thanks a lot.
All right, we'll take a picture together. I'll have you guys hold that.
At this time, I'm going to ask the call, I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for November 20th to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Present.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Present.
Councilmember Cashman.
Present.
Councilmember Osman.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Present.
Councilmember Vito.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Koski.
Present.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Present.
Vice President Shugtai.
Present.
President Payne.
Present.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect, we have a quorum. Before we begin the meeting, I want to offer a friendly reminder to all members and staff that this meeting is broadcast live to enable greater public participation. The broadcast includes real-time captioning as a further method to increase the accessibility of our proceedings to the community. Therefore, all speakers need to be mindful of the rate of their speech so that our captioners can fully capture and transcribe all comments for the broadcast. We ask all speakers to moderate the speed and clarity of their comments. With that, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments? Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I have an amendment before the body. I move to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Introduction and Referral Calendar, a motion to amend the prior introduction of an ordinance relating to humane encampment response.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the agenda is adopted. The next item is the acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting of November 6th. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So move second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the minutes have been accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So move second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and those matters have been referred. The next order of business is presentations of reports from our standing committees. Those are taken in alphabetical order, beginning with the report of our administration and enterprise oversight committee, which will be presented by its chair. Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. The administration and enterprise oversight committee is bringing forward 22 items. The first is a gift acceptance from Cities Today Institute for lodging and meal expenses. Two is a bid for public sidewalk snow and ice removal. Three is a bid for Target Center steam station improvements. Four is a bid for Freely Softening Plant Lime System replacement. Five is a bid for Lindale Avenue North Traffic Control Signal Systems and Storm Sewer slash pedestrian curb ramps improvements project. Six is master contracts for eligible providers of workforce development services for 2026 through 2028. Seven is a contract with Kodak Architectural Group for architecture and engineering services for the carpenter and mechanic shop on the Freely Water Treatment Campus. Eight is a contract amendment with Hagen Adams P L L C for after-action reviews and reports. Nine is a contract amendment with Shehe Construction Company for lightning replacement and Target Center escalator lobby. Ten is contract amendment with Tyzek Concrete Inc. for the Phillips Traffic Safety Project. Eleven is a contract amendment with Bolton and Mink Inc. for engineering and design services for Bridge Nine improvements project. Twelve is contract amendment with Certified Languages International LLC for remote interpreting services. Thirteen is contract amendments with multiple vendors for community trauma response services. Fourteen is contract amendments with various immigration legal services providers. Fifteen is contracts with various organizations for partnership engagement fund projects. Sixteen is cooperative funding agreement with Minnesota Historical Society for the St. Anthony Falls Heritage Board. Seventeen is Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities appointments. Eighteen is 2025 property tax special assessment of delinquent utility charges. Nineteen is illegal settlement workers' compensation claim of Jared Moore. Twenty is illegal settlement M D C R charge number 23-09198. Twenty-one is illegal settlement Marion Lewis v. City of Minneapolis. And twenty-two is a gift acceptance from the Public Rights Project for conference travel, lodging, and meal expenses. With that, I will move approval of all items.
Councilmember Wonsley has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Excuse me. Next, we'll have the report from our budget committee given by that committee's chair. Council Vice President Shugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. The budget committee is bringing forward one item for approval today, which is a passage of resolution approving the adjusted 20-year neighborhood park plan guaranteed minimum annual amounts for 2027 through 2031 due to inflation. I'll move approval of this item.
Vice President Shugtai has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Next, we'll have the report from our Business Housing and Zoning Committee given by that committee's chair, Councilmember Osman.
Thank you, President Payne. The Business Housing and Zoning Committee is bringing forward 22 items today. Item one is approving ordinance related to the Heritage Preservation Regulation. Item two is approving a liquor and sidewalk cafe license for Bobby Kajun. Item three is approving an extended hour license for U Tobacco. Item four is approving an extended hours license for Zip of Silk. Item five is approving an annual levies for special assessment. Item six is considering an appeal from 1717 developers to demolish the John Cook House. This item was forwarded without recommendation. Item seven is denying an appeal submitted by Marsha Haggenson for the property at 2821 Brookwood Terrace. Item eight is approving three liquor licenses. Item nine is approving seven liquor license renewals. Item 10 is approving a 13 gambling license renewals. Item 11 is accepting a grant from the state for dislocated workers. Item 12 is approving decertification for three TIF districts. Item 13 is approving a comprehensive plan amendment for River North Development. Item 14 is authorizing modification for the NOAA Preservation Fund. Item 15 is amending the contract with KMA Development for the property at 1200 and West Broadway. Item 16 is approving a new street name of Kirk Washington Jr. submitted by Councilmember Ellison. Item 17 is also approving a new street name for Chi Zhang submitted by Councilmember Ellison. Item 18 is approving appreciation for demolishing two properties for the city. Item 19 is approving rested land sales to Homies for Homies for the Emergency Stabilization Pilot Program. Item 20 is approving the annual affordable housing trust fund award recommendation. Item 21 is approving a reservation of 9% low-income housing tax credit. And lastly, item 22 is approving as amended an ordinance related to the signage on premises. This was approved as amended during the biz committee last Thursday. With that, I will move all items for approvals and pull item one and six for separate discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Osman has moved the approval of the report minus items one and six. Is there any discussion on the remainder of the items? Seeing none, I'll...
I'm sorry, I can't get... I'd like to pull item 22 for discussion, please.
I need you. Oh, I see. I am not seeing the queue. I got it. Councilmember Cashman.
I was going to pull 22 for discussion.
All right. Councilmember Ellison.
Thank you. Just wanted to speak briefly on items, I believe, 16 and 17. These are street renaming, or commemorative street signs for Kirk Washington and Chi Zhang. And, you know, both are people who contributed to the fabric of North Minneapolis. Kirk was a beloved poet, father, community member, organizer. And we've been having, the community's been celebrating Kirk Washington Day for a number of years, and you guys have seen him evoked here in chambers. And so, to have a sign that really marks the fact that he embodied Harrison is really important to the community, and I want to thank all you, hope you guys support it. And Chi Zhang was really beloved, took a plot of land that a lot of folks thought of as like desolate, can't build on it, can't garden on it. And she's really made the Jordan Area Community Council Garden into an oasis on the north side and is no longer with us. But the legacy that she created on the north side really carries on, so carries on. So, I want to thank you guys for supporting this, and it's always beautiful to just see, to have the ability on this dais to celebrate our elders and those who have moved on. So, thank you, guys.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Mr. Chair, I don't need to pull it for discussion, but I'd like to say a few words about item number seven. It was an appeal variance by Marsha Haggenson. If I can just say that now. I wanted to point out that I really appreciate Ms. Haggenson's research and work to present her appeal that she did to you on the committee last week. She clearly spent a great deal of time thinking about the impacts of development and the potential consequences to our environment. At the end of this process, I cannot and you have not found any precedent to be able to support the appeal. The Shoreland Overlay District is not a prohibition against development or encroachment. Our Shoreland Overlay is very often missed, it's talked about in strange ways because it really doesn't, it applies differently to urban areas where you can see lots of structures from the water. We're going to see that again here in a couple of weeks. The Shoreland Overlay District should be a process assurance that extra scrutiny is paid to development or land use and variance kinds of requests. Staff reviewed, per Ms. Haggenson's request, digital application databases and found 11 applications for development within 40 feet of a steep slope in a shoreland area. One was withdrawn, but all the other 10 were approved, typically with conditions regarding construction activity. I want to note that there are conditions placed on the approval around erosion control to protect Minnehaha Creek, which is important to all of us. Based on that, I can't support this appeal. But one other note, Ms. Haggenson has some valid concerns about the process to testify and file an appeal. And I know that staff have heard those concerns, and they're working to help make that process more clear and more explanatory. So, I hope that for that, Ms. Haggenson can ultimately find her efforts here with the zoning board of adjustments and then our city council will nod for nod. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Ellison.
Sorry, I forgot to mention that because I'm the author of the items of bringing forward the street, the commemorative signs, I cannot vote on them. So, just didn't want people to hear abstention and be like, "What? I thought he supported those." But yeah, I do have to abstain from items 16 and 17. Just wanted to let the community and the body know.
Sounds good. Seeing no one else left in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the biz report minus items 1, 6, and 22.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Koski.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Shugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report, except for items number 16 and 17, which have 11 ayes and two abstentions, or one abstention, 11 ayes on both items.
Those items carry. Next, we will take up item number one, the Heritage Preservation Regulations Ordinance. I'm going to add myself to queue because I have an amendment, I actually have two amendments on this that are related. These are printed out in front of you, and the goal of this is to add some more clarity around what the responsibility of a property owner is to provide interim protections so that we can maintain security and weather tightness of buildings. So, further down the agenda, we're going to be addressing a house that was on the historical preservation list that deteriorated because of some of the inability to keep the building weather tight. It's eroded over time, and this amendment to the ordinance should help prevent that in the future. And I'd really appreciate my colleagues' support on this. Is there a second to my motion to amend?
Second.
Any discussion? I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries and that amendment is adopted. Next, I will recognize Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I'm also bringing forward a motion that's in front of you all, and I think many of you are also aware that I've had some significant time now on council of learning a lot about our heritage preservation process here at the city and the conversations around it is really around how we best preserve our city's heritage and preserve our history while also acknowledging that that history intersects with a lot of other important and ongoing conversations about development, equity, arts and culture, and infrastructure. And also recognizing that every potential proposed case of historic designation is different, and every one of those cases represents the opportunity of meaningful conversation about a piece of physical and cultural history and how to honor that history while also moving forward with the city's future in an equitable way. With that in mind, I'm very excited to see the updated Heritage Preservation Ordinances coming forward today, and also want to thank city staff and the Heritage Preservation Commission who put a tremendous amount of work into revising this ordinance. There are five bodies that currently can nominate a building or district for historic designation, and that includes the mayor, a council member, a member of the Historic or Heritage Preservation Commission, the director of CPET, or the property owner. And the ordinance proposed by staff creates a new early step in the process to allow the city staff to review and research properties to determine if they meet the criteria for designation before a public nomination or demolition request can enter the next step of the process. Essentially, this is a early eligibility screening for potential nominations, and the screening step only applies, again, to those five bodies. Elected officials are not included in this step because they represent the public's interests. That said, in reviewing the proposed ordinance, the Heritage Preservation Commission suggested that the nominations from the HPC itself should also be exempt from the eligibility screening for nominations, and I agree. And that's what's reflected in the amendment before you today. The HPC, again, the Heritage Preservation Commission, is a body of residence and subject experts who bring important and diverse perspectives to our city's heritage preservation practices. It's appropriate to maintain their current ability to nominate a property without adding additional prescreenings. The HPC also helps widen the public conversation about heritage preservation, and we should want to honor and foster that role rather than create more administrative steps that culminate it. It's also an important way to empower and support our appointed boards and commissions, who often raise this concerns of not feeling heard or feeling like their expertise is truly supported and uplifted by city leaders. And this represents the opportunity for us to do exactly that in regards to the Heritage Preservation Commission. So with that, I will ask for a second, and we'll stand for any questions.
Second. Councilmember Wonsley has moved an amendment. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion? I'll recognize Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. It was my understanding that the amendment put forward by staff was intended to reduce administrative processes, and I'm wondering if staff could actually come up and explain the rationale behind kind of taking away this ability for the Heritage Preservation Commission to put forward a nomination in the same way that council and the mayor would be able to.
And members of the City Council, my name is Andrea Burke, and I am the supervisor of the Historic Preservation Team in CPED. So this amendment is a section of... Well, this section of code, let me start there, says that only properties that have been determined eligible for designation may be nominated before the Heritage Preservation Commission, and elected officials are exempt from this requirement, as was stated by Councilmember Wonsley. This step was added to ensure that nominations meet the significance and integrity criteria before beginning the public process, and it was really modeled after the National Register system. Staff prefers that only elected officials remain exempt since they represent the public interests. Staff can accept this amendment, but to your question, Councilmember Cashman, the intent behind it was to provide a degree of research and vetting and really ensure that the significance criteria and the eligibility really met the city's ordinance and letter before it embarks, as I mentioned, on a lengthy public process where if nominated, interim protection gets put on the property owner, which is a pretty hefty, I wouldn't say restriction, but it's a hefty layer for them to endure. And we wanted to make sure that before this happens, that we really have thoroughly looked through and made sure that this property meets the criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. And then a follow-up question to that is, is there anything precluding the Heritage Preservation Commissioner from just finding a council member to sponsor their proposed nomination to go... To be able to waive this process?
Council President Payne and Councilmember Cashman, no, there is nothing. Heritage Preservation Commissioner may go straight to a council member to sponsor this nomination. A member of the public can do that. Really, anybody can go and ask a council member to take forward a nomination. That was put forth by design because, as we mentioned, because the council very much listens to their constituents and their needs and is most familiar with their ward. So that was part of the idea for exempting elected officials in this matter.
Thank you. I'm going to vote against this amendment and with staff on this, and I think it's important that the mayor and the city council have the exemption, but that the unelected officials on the Heritage Preservation Commission, which are important members of the community and do have subject expertise, still have to go through the process that any other community member would go through. Thank you.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, Chair Payne. I really appreciate this amendment being brought forward, and I understand council members' thought process in bringing it forward. I think I'm seeing it differently today. For me, I believe that historical preservation should be pretty judicious. I think it should be something that doesn't happen with a lot of regularity because of the burden that it puts on the property itself in terms of renovations, in terms of changes that can be made. And I think the nomination process, specifically putting it under interim protection and having to go through an entire process before it is actually found to be historically significant for it to continue through the process, makes me feel that I think it should be just limited to a council member or the mayor. Pretty similar to how we do street renaming's. I think with street renaming's, the Public Works Director also can be involved, but I think there's ways for us to come together and work with the HPC to get a nomination through. So for those reasons, I won't be able to support this amendment today.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect for this idea and broadening the net, so to speak, I also can't support this amendment from Councilmember Wonsley. Staff have carefully considered who is best to represent the will and the needs of residents and surrounding properties, and that is elected officials, council members, and the mayor. We want to make sure that nominations are being vetted per these new systems that were outlined in this ordinance. There are good improvements in here, and the piece from Council President Payne is another good improvement. The Heritage Preservation Commission members are appointed. They do really good work for the public with their expertise, which we value, but they have not been elected to represent residents. We are the ones that hear all of the issues and concerns or ideas from our community. I don't see the community reaching out to specific Heritage Preservation members. As Councilmember Cashman suggested and Ms. Burke confirmed, if a commissioner or resident wants to make a nomination, they can pretty easily work with a council member, any council member, to do so on their behalf. That council member can review the request and take into consideration not just the property, but the broader impacts of a designation that we've all wrestled with on this dais. Thank you.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Thank you, President Payne. I want staff to come forward again just to answer a follow-up question. Can you give a little bit of insights? Because from my understanding, right now, again, the five bodies can do nominations prior to the enacting of this ordinance that would change that. On average, how many nominations is the HPC bringing forward each year?
Council President Payne and Councilmember Wonsley, in the past year, we've had one or two that have come through for definitely one, I think two actually, from the Heritage Preservation Commission. Often, that's a pretty average number that comes through, so it is not a significant amount, to be quite honest. That is my answer.
Thank you for that, just clarity, because I think there is this understanding or misconception that HPC is just out here willy-nilly, just wielding this responsibility that they currently have. I think they have approached it with due diligence, and we don't see these often come forward through this body for consideration. I think as a result of HPC also recognizing the significance of work that goes into a nomination process, they do work with staff, just as a council member would, on also reconciling just the totality of what it would take to actually move application through the process. So the fact that this is literally not happening at abundant amount shows to me, again, like HPC recognizes this, it should not be a privilege that stripped of them. And again, I stand on the premises that we should be empowering our appointed boards and commissions, especially when they're doing their due diligence, and the HPC has demonstrated that. And also the fact that staff has also said this is a acceptable amendment in itself. So with that, thank you for adding that clarity, and I still stand on the amendment.
Seeing no one else left in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the Wonsley amendment.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Nay.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Nay.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Nay.
Councilmember Cashman.
Nay.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Nay.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
No.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Nay.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Nay.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are five ayes and eight nays.
That amendment fails, so we have the underlying ordinance as amended by me in front of us. Is there any discussion on the remainder of this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and that ordinance is adopted. Next, we will take up item number six, and I will recognize City Attorney Anderson.
Thank you, Council President, council members. The city attorney's office recommends that the council refer this item back to staff today. Regulatory Services, with assistance from the city attorney's office, is in the process of finalizing an agreement with the property owner, which will facilitate the property being sold within the next six months. The agreement will also require upkeep and maintenance of the property during that timeframe. We believe that this agreement will serve the interests of the city, the community, and the property owner, and provide a tangible path forward to seeing the property restored so that its historic significance can be appreciated, realized, and continued. In furtherance of this, the property owner and his attorney have provided a written agreement to extend the city's decision-making period under Minnesota Statute, Section 15.99, for an additional six months.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. This property is in my ward. I will be happy to make that motion to refer this item back to staff. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. Can you just clarify again what the process would be for the owner, developer, to attempt to demolish the building in the future?
Madam City Attorney? Mr. Fussi.
Council President, council members, I apologize, I'm kind of multitasking there. What was the question again?
Oh, the question was what the process would be, you know, if this referral back to staff passes, what would be the process for the owner, current owner and developer, to attempt to demolish the Cook House in the future?
Thank you, Councilmember Cashman and council members. My understanding of the agreement is that this will not allow for demolition of the property, and if the ends of this agreement weren't achieved in the timeframe contemplated, which is six months for a sale, essentially because the request for a certificate of authorization to demolish has been put on pause or referred back to staff, it would have to be brought back before this council and voted on again and obtained a new, for instance.
After... Sorry, just to clarify, so it would be after six months if there's no sale?
That's correct.
And what would happen during the six months?
My understanding of the terms of the agreement is that during that six months, the property owner will be endeavoring to sell the property, even if it is at a loss, and has some, I guess, leads, for lack of a better term, to do that and is at least confident that he will be able to achieve that. And I believe that staff is also confident that that is a realistic outcome. However, obviously, that needs to happen, and nothing is assured, but I think the framework of this agreement does protect the city in terms of he's not being provided with any right to demolish at any point of time. It would still need to come back through this council.
Got it. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fussi. Thank you, President Payne.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the referral of item number six back to staff.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osmond.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Allison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That item carries, and that item is referred back to staff. And next, we will take up item number 22, and I will recognize Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. Before I speak on the ordinance in general, I just wanted to note that my staff is currently writing up an amendment to bring forward, which Councilmember Rainville and I had spoken about right before the committee. So I'll just read generally what that amendment intends to do, and it's to make sure to clarify that existing billboards benefiting from a conversion from static to digital shall be subject to the terms of any vehicle approved for future revenue share or municipal tax. So this is to clarify that in the future, as we go to the state legislature and ask for the ability to create a revenue generation tool for digital billboards in the city, that all digital billboards in the city will be subject to that, even the ones that exist by that point. And so this is a matter of fairness, so that all digital billboards in the city will be subject to the same terms. So I would like to introduce that in a minute when you have the paper copy in front of you. And in the meantime, I'll just speak briefly to the ordinance in general. I'm really grateful to the staff, Sarah Roman, Meg McMahon, and Jason Wittenberg, who put a lot of time into this ordinance over the past year, and also to my staff, John Misavich in particular, who worked really closely with a lot of building owners, business owners, stakeholders, artists, and city staff on crafting a lot of really important changes to our signage code. Some of those that I feel most excited about moving forward today is that painted wall signs will no longer be regulated citywide, which offers an opportunity for small businesses to create more visibility and vibrancy on their buildings. It also expands signage allowances in CM3 zoning areas. It also creates the conditions that billboards will be no longer allowed to subsidize vacant properties. Also, replacing signs with similar ones will no longer require a permit or cost business, small businesses, a fee. So this streamlines the processes for that. We also have a provision whereby Skyway businesses will have a special sign allowance to ensure that they can advertise their business to street-level pedestrians. One of our biggest wayfinding challenges downtown is helping pedestrians identify their ways in and out of the Skyway and the businesses that are at the Skyway level. And then finally, another provision allows for new sign types, like building wraps and light-projection signs, to be experimented with within a specific area of the city. With that, I will allow for others to speak on this item before bringing forward the amendment. Thanks.
Mr. President, we're having some technical issues getting to the amendment, and my advice would be that we put this aside and come back to it under the rules so that the substantive amendment of this kind is in front of the body and can be read and reviewed and then spoken to. And so as we continue to work with the staff to get that amendment finalized and produced, I think we could set that aside for now and move on with the rest of the agenda and come back to it at the end.
Yeah, without objection, let's set it aside, and I don't know if I have to plug it in somewhere in the agenda. Maybe the clerks can let me know once it pops up and we can...
Happy to do so.
All right. All right, without objection, let's set that aside and move on to our next committee, which is the Climate and Infrastructure Committee, which will be presented by the committee's chair, Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the Climate and Infrastructure Committee has 10 items today. Item one is a resolution honoring the staff and contractors that worked on the Hennepin Avenue South reconstruction. Item two is related to First Avenue South reconstruction from Franklin to Grant and has resolutions ordering work to proceed, adopting special assessments, requesting the BET authorized issuance and sale of assessment bonds, and ordering the abandonment and removal of areaways in conflict with the project. Item three is related to Cedar Avenue reconstruction from 24th Street East to Lake Street East and has resolutions ordering work to proceed, adopting special assessments, requesting the BET authorized issuance and sale of assessment bonds, and ordering the abandonment and removal of areaways in conflict with the project. And then item four is related to Lowry Avenue Northeast Street reconstruction, Phase Two from Marshall Street Northeast to Washington Street Northeast, with similar resolutions to the previous two items. Item five is authorizing a subordinate funding agreement with the Met Council for local work designed and administrative... work design and administrative costs related to the Metro Blue Line extension. Item six is a resolution amending the 2025 Capital Improvement Appropriation Resolution to authorize closure and appropriation adjustments for capital projects and programs, as well as reallocations and redistributions of excess funds. Item seven is authorizing a cooperative agreement with Hennepin County for the Cedar Avenue reconstruction. Item eight is authorizing a utility easement with the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board for storm sewer and stormwater basins within Columbia Golf Course and Park. Item nine is authoring a joint powers agreement with the Minneapolis Park Board for parkway paving, repair, and reconstruction. And item ten is a resolution updating the price structure and rates for charging electric vehicles in the public right-of-way as part of the EV Spot Network pilot. I'll move approval of all items.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cashman?
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly thank staff for item number nine, which is a joint powers agreement with the Park Board for parkway paving, repair, and reconstruction. Not sure if other council members have this issue in their wards, but for me, in Ward seven, the parkways around the lakes have become an area where we had some lack of clarity around governance in terms of who was in charge of traffic calming and safety improvements and even the trimming of various greenery that have blocked sightlines and so on. So I'm really grateful for those who have put the work in to make sure that those roles and responsibilities are clarified with the Park Board so that constituent services, as it relates to parkways, can improve in the future. Thank you.
Seeing no one else left in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll on the CNI report.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted. Finally, we have the Public Health and Safety Committee, which will be presented by that committee's chair, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Health and Safety Committee will be bringing forward two items. Item number one is opioid overdoses and possession of naloxone or other opioid antagonist. Item number two is toward zero death grant from the state of Minnesota through the City of Crystal Police Department to prove the safety of Minneapolis roads. I'll move approval of these items.
Councilmember Chavez has moved approval of the committee's report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries and the report is adopted, and before we complete all of our reports, I see that we have our amendment for item number twenty-two on the biz report. I will recognize Councilmember Cashman.
All right, thank you, President Payne. So this is an amendment to Section 560.320 of the sign ordinance, and in addition to the amendment that I moved at biz committee, there's also a new portion at the very bottom that says, and I'll read for the record, "Existing billboards benefiting from a conversion from static to digital shall be subject to the terms of any vehicle approved for future revenue share or municipal tax." And I would like to move this amendment for approval and just state that it's, you know, there's work to be done through IGR to allow, to get statutory approval from the state in order for us to set up a mechanism of this sort, but we want to make sure that once that's set up, that there is fairness in how it is applied across the city and that no one would benefit from an exemption from that in the future.
Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk.
Sorry to interrupt. Just in quick consultation with Mr. Fussie from the City Attorney's Office, my understanding, and he can explain it, is that the written copy of this amendment in front of you is incorrect and is not what the attorney's office had indicated should be included, and so perhaps Mr. Fussie can walk us through the amendment as it exists in front of you now, and to the extent that the clerks are able to capture that, we'll do our best to facilitate that process.
Mr. Fussie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Clerk and councilmembers, kind of doing some very last-minute drafting here along with your able staff, Councilmember Cashman, and I think the gist of what is put, what is on the paper here was what we were working on, but I believe that we agreed with your staff with some slightly different language. I did provide that in the team's chat to Mr. Clerk, the Clerk's office, and I can read it now. I don't know if you want to have it reprinted, but it would, in replacing the underlined language that's on the paper here, it would read, "Existing off-premises signs benefiting from a conversion from static to digital under this subsection shall be subject to the terms of any legislative mechanism approved, providing for future revenue share or municipal tax to the extent permitted by law." That's essentially the same gist of the intent, as I understand it, of the initial language that was provided, but it involved a little bit of tweaking from my office in consultation with your staff, and that would be the form, I think, that we would recommend.
Mr. Clerk, having the city attorney read that into the record, are we good to move forward?
I think we're good, as long as councilmembers understand what he said, and if you want him to read it again, he certainly can.
One more time, please.
Thank you. So the amendment, which would be added to the end of Section 560.320, Subsection 1B, would read, "Existing off-premises signs benefiting from a conversion from static to digital under this subsection shall be subject to the terms of any legislative mechanism approved, providing for future revenue share or municipal tax to the extent permitted by law."
Okay. Councilmember Cashman, would you like to move that language?
Yes, I will move the language that attorney Fussie just read, and thank you so much for your comments and help.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. I'll recognize Councilmember Chowdhury.
I'm in queue for Councilmember Rainville.
Thank you, Councilmember Chowdhury, and thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Cashman, for letting me add to this clarification. So this, I think, our attorney, Mr. Fussie, thank you for your help as well. So I think this just clarifies what will happen and that no one will benefit unintentionally from this, so thank you very much.
All right, seeing no one else left in queue and without objection, let's take up the ordinance as amended.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai. President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries and that ordinance is adopted, which completes the reports of all of our standing committees. Next, we have introduction and referral calendar. We have one item today, which was added to our agenda at the beginning of today's meeting. May I have a motion to approve this amended introduction and set a public hearing for the committee of the whole meeting on December ninth? We didn't do, yeah. Councilmember Chowdhury?
I thought you had mistaken me for when my queue was stuck on the last item, so I'm sorry, we've gotten a lot of paper in a really, really fast amount of time.
This is the referral to the committee of the whole.
Yes, I understand.
Yep.
And I can't even find that referral. There it is. I knew it was under there somewhere. Okay, so me, Councilmember Chavez, Council Vice President Chugtai, in the beginning of the term, noticed an ordinance related to health, sanitation, humane encampment response, and so today we're moving forward to bring language to the committee of the whole and have a public hearing. We have been working with our city attorney's office, our clerk's office, and are in conversations with city staff. The language is available for you in LEMS, and just to kind of put a little bit more detail, while not going too far into it, it details subject matter around a preclosure notice, some required public health approaches and tools that are necessary once an encampment at a certain size is formed, requirement for storage, and then some provisions related to the encampment closure itself. And so I will be moving that forward for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Pomisano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This ordinance was noticed in January of 2024, and then it was introduced and referred in February of that year. I don't think, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this came back to PHS at all. It's being pulled and sent directly to Cow. So can you help explain why this isn't following a standard process? And I certainly understand and appreciate that if an ordinance gets stuck in committee, that there needs to be a mechanism to bring it forward a different way and for everybody to weigh in on it, but that's not the case. We didn't get a chance to review it in any amount of detail in Public Safety Committee. I'm sure this is about timing and the end of the term, but this could also just be reintroduced in January and scheduled immediately for a public hearing. All of the people putting this forward will be here next term.
Vice President Chugtai.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I think a part of it is certainly the timeline for the end of the term and wanting to make sure that, you know, this work that has been now four years in the making and has included a pretty significant amount of community engagement, along with work with our city attorney's office in this term, is seen through to its logical endpoint. And then I think another portion, or another part of the consideration for bringing this to Cow directly is that, you know, this is a body of work, homelessness response, humane encampment response, that I think is of interest to a lot of members, and, you know, this is an issue that we have discussed in different iterations throughout this term and last. So wanting to make sure that while it is at the level of public hearing, presentation, and amendment, that we're able to all collectively participate in that process, and, you know, I'd welcome if councilmembers, Chavez or Chowdhury, have additional context to share. But the gist of it is, I think this is something the entire body is really invested in, and I think we would all benefit from just doing the process of a public hearing and refinement together.
Mr. Chair, I do appreciate those comments. I do hope that we also are able to give this the fulsome time and need for deliberation that it deserves. It doesn't need to be in Public Safety Committee, but it does need a lot of time and deliberation. And just having finished agenda setting yesterday with the enormous number of items trying to get done by the end of the year, I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in queue, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Nay.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Nay.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Nay.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Nay.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are nine ayes and four nays.
That motion carries. The next order of business is resolutions. The resolutions that we received at the beginning of the meeting are in front of us. Are there any questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt those resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
The clerk will call, oh, Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. I don't have any questions per se. I just wanted to just acknowledge again the really critical importance of the transgender Day of Remembrance Ordinance, and, you know, and we also did the World Children's Day Honorary Resolution, and so I wanted to try to tie those two together and really just acknowledge the deep attacks that have been placed on transgender children in our country, in our state, and really make sure that as we are recognizing World Children's Day, we also recognize the realization and the awareness around transgender children and the challenges that they face and that we include them in all of our work that we are doing to improve the lives of children in this city. Thank you, Senator.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vito.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wonsley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
That carries and those resolutions are adopted. The next order of business is motions. Today, we have a motion from Councilmember Jenkins, who is moving to direct the city clerk to return consideration of the George Floyd Square project concept layout and easement to the city council for further consideration. This item was referred to the clerk at our February thirteenth meeting while the council awaited further information on pedestrian mall option. Councilmember Jenkins, would you like to speak to this motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to speak to this motion, and just to be clear, I wanted to bring this forward. I know we are expecting to hear from public work staff regarding the pedestrian mall option. You know, we're not sure what that report is going to give us, but I wanted to bring this item back in case we learn that the pedestrian mall option is not an option. We know that there are some challenges with the business community that don't necessarily support that option, and so in the event that we learn that the pedestrian mall option is not going to be adopted, we would have an opportunity to vote on the flexible option, which in my communications with community and with some of the community leaders, there seems to be a willingness to, to, I guess, be in favor of that option, and so this would give us an opportunity to vote on that if necessary. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins has moved to direct the clerk to return consideration to the city council, consideration of the pending action item, LEMS File 2024-01336. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. I'll recognize Councilmember Chavez.
Council President Payne, thank you. I am speaking out against this motion. On December 2nd, 2025, there is a GFS Town Hall regarding a united vision for George Floyd Square, being presented by the Community Vision Council can do, among others. And on December 4th, 2025, the Community Vision Council will be proposing its layout proposal for George Floyd Square at the Climate and Infrastructure Committee. I was very clear with my position with the community that I represent. I earned 77.27% of the vote in the precinct located at George Floyd Square in Ward Nine. Elections are referendums, and neighbors spoke loud and clear this election. I do not support this proposal or this motion, although I am ready to find a compromise. I just want to highlight a letter, a collective letter, regarding the People's Way we received from P3 and Riser Member yesterday, because I think that when we talk about the future of George Floyd Square, we also need to talk about the future of the People's Way. We, as the remaining candidates... We, as the remaining candidates in the People's Way queue process, have united together to demand that the City of Minneapolis make a decision on the People's Way by December 31, 2025. We have engaged in this process in good faith, but the City of Minneapolis has not delivered on its commitment to provide us with an answer by May 2025. And said, "The city has strung us along from month to month with revised and unmet deliverables. The treatment throughout this process that we and by extension our supporting communities have received feels inequitable and discriminatory. On multiple occasions, we asked to merge plans and compromise our respective visions." I join the community on this call as well.
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I'll just start by sharing that I'm equally concerned about the letter that we received from P3 and Rise and Remember about the delays with regards to making decisions about the future of the People's Way. And I really want to see the departments responsible for that project, you know, provide clarity to the organizations involved. And at the same time, I believe that it's time for us to provide clarity ourselves on the future of the street infrastructure and ensure that the neighborhood of the four neighborhoods that are involved in the George Floyd Square can receive the benefits of the street reconstruction that has been in the works for many years now. And the sooner that we can provide clarity on the concept layout for this street is the sooner that construction can begin. And so I'll be supporting Councilmember Jenkins' motion today to put the open flexible concept back on the table on December 11 following the town hall that will be taking place on December 2 and the Climate and Infrastructure Committee meeting that will be taking place on December 4.
Councilmember Osman.
Yeah, just, I just want a clarification for anyone. What was the last decision that we made about this and where are we on that? Have we selected a pedestrian option? Was that the decision that we made last time? City Clerk, if you can clarify where we are and what the status is on this item.
Mr. Carl.
Mr. President and to councilmembers, there are two sort of competing visions, if you will, for the George Floyd Square development. The first one, which has been many years in queue, is currently represented in LIMs File 2024-01336. What that proposal is, as I think Councilmember Jenkins described it, is a flexible or mixed-use plan design. That plan in February of this year was referred to the city clerk and placed on file. So it remains in its final stage. It was under many, many years of development and had reached a final stage of ready to be approved in its final form. Before that vote was taken, the council referred it to the city clerk, where it remains on file and active. The other action that was then introduced was the proposal to develop a pedestrian mall at that intersection. That's contained in LIMs File 2025-00226. The legislative directive issued by the council with respect to that proposal was for staff to, within the bounds of the law, which specifically apply to closing a street and creating a pedestrian mall, be evaluated and reported back to council. There are a number of technical, very specific things that have to be met in order to create a pedestrian mall, which were explained by Assistant City Attorney Tiffany Spore at a meeting several months ago at this point. But that pending legislative direction on a pedestrian mall is, in fact, the file that is on its way to coming back in the next cycle through Climate and Infrastructure Committee that the chair, Councilmember Cashman, just referenced. So the evaluation on criteria set by state law in order to create a pedestrian plaza will be presented from staff at the next Climate and Infrastructure meeting in the next cycle. The other option that staff had presented previously, which was the flexible mixed-use option, remains on file. What Councilmember Jenkins' motion is doing is saying, "Bring that back off the file so that, at the meeting on December 11, both of those proposals are in front of council and the option to pursue one or the other is available to the council."
Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Point of order.
Councilmember Cashman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I do want to clarify, Mr. Clerk, that there is not a pedestrian mall concept layout coming forward for the body to vote on. And I think that's a point of confusion in community, is there's only one street concept layout that Public Works has presented and brought forward. There will not necessarily be a vote on a pedestrian plaza concept coming before the body to deliberate next cycle.
Mr. President, to Councilmember Cashman, if I misspoke, I apologize. I thought I had said, and I'll reiterate, there is a proposal from the body to develop a pedestrian mall. However, under state law, that requires an ordinance, as you know. That ordinance has not been drafted. It requires first a significant level of analysis and study to see about the specific statutory requirements to be met. And on any of those points, I would defer to the city attorney. But that was brought forward to this body for the information of the body before making a decision. That if this body wishes to pursue the proposal that was made orally to close the intersection and make a pedestrian mall, there would have to be extensive study, certain statutory requirements would have to be satisfied, and an ordinance enacted. The report from staff that is on in queue coming forward to the Climate and Infrastructure Committee in the next cycle is a report from staff, not an ordinance and not a fully baked proposal, to be clear. It is the report from staff on those statutory requirements that would have to be satisfied. After that, council would have to introduce an ordinance to fully, or to pursue, a mall, pedestrian mall at that intersection. And since that is our last meeting of the year, I think everyone is aware that that proposal would have to be carried forward into the new term. There is no time left for the pedestrian mall to advance in this current term.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's correct. And I just wanted to clarify that at the CNI Committee next, on December 4, there will not be a decision being made, there will not be a vote, because the report that we're getting back from Public Works staff will be a receive-and-file item. And the presentations that we will hear from community will be receive-and-file items. There will not be a choice between two options being made.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, President Payne. And, you know, I do want to congratulate Councilmember Chavez on his 77% of the vote in that precinct. I do want to just note that there are three other neighborhoods that are at that intersection, and they did not vote for you, sir. And so it would be a disservice to the entire community to have one precinct determine the outcome for the entire intersection. And so I just want to point out again and reiterate what the clerk mentioned and then Councilmember Cashman just clarified, is that this will only provide us an opportunity to consider this option if, in fact, the pedestrian mall option is not a viable solution. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmasano.
So I just acknowledged in a previous motion that maybe, just maybe, we can get all that encampment ordinance stuff done here before the term ends. And I voted for it in good faith, that we could all consider this and maybe close a chapter that Minneapolis has really struggled with. Why can't we do that here? I think this offers a compromise. It offers an opportunity to maybe be able to bring this to some kind of conclusion. It does not and never has been about erasure. Not supporting this option to take a vote on this at the end of this term means continued delay on George Floyd Square development, continued delay on the revival of George Floyd Square. I'm surprised to learn that some of my colleagues have lost track of this. It is an important issue to everyone in our city. We know from multiple surveys and the most extensive and expensive engagement ever that the vast majority of property owners do not support a pedestrian mall. This non-support means there is no legal basis to continue supporting this option, and it is a total waste of taxpayer dollars and everybody that has spent time on engagement through this process, and people have spent a lot of time. Residents in the community in Wards 8 and 9 especially have spent incredible amounts of time on engagement. Further, this means a delay into another city council. It's a delay for the sake of politics. It is not good governance, and it is not reflecting the desires of the people or the businesses that literally live there.
Councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, President Payne. I think there is actually shared agreement around, all of us wants clarity around the future of GFS. I think where we have, where I thought there was alignment based off of the resolution that we also passed on December 5 of last year, we said that the community would be in the driver's seat of defining what that vision would be, and we said we would give the community time to come forward to this body with that plan, which they are actually doing in the next CNI, to say, "We did the hard work to work with business owners with different stakeholders, residential homeowners in the communities, to figure out a concept layout proposal that actually has our own backing." Where there has been disagreement is the role in which the city or the prior administration has played in leading a concept layout that does actually include, and has felt like it's included, erasure, considering it's coming from the very entity that basically took George Floyd's life. And that has always been the piece of community should be leading this. The folks who were there being occupied by military trucks for weeks, who saw also George Floyd be strangled by a Minneapolis officer, who have had to constantly see the city avoid responsibility and accountability outside of just paying 27 million to George Floyd's family, they have looked at the city side eye for saying, "How dare you come forward and say you get to decide what the future of George Floyd Square is." So I am excited and looking forward to the presentation from community members who actually live there, business owners who also live there, who are actually united behind a proposal to bring to this body for consideration and to take the time to do that. It took how many years of inaction to let Derek Chauvin to run rampant and terrorize communities up to the point of taking George Floyd's life? We could take another cycle to make an actual, clear decision on what is a restorative approach that acknowledges the history of what happened at that intersection through a community-led vision and a community-led orientation. So I would rather take the time to see what that is and to then bring that forward as opposed to adopting something that just feels convenient and easy right now. So I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for bringing this forward. Also, I second the comments around, "We're detaching infrastructure decisions from also how we're memorializing the city's responsibility in taking George Floyd's life and also its continued divestment in that intersection for years." And one piece of that was getting an outcome on the People's Way. And we had vendors or community partners who went through a very thorough process, worked with staff diligently to bring their best proposal forward with also having a community-led vision for how to re-envision that into a permanent memorial. And that has not happened. In nowhere have we've ever seen delays like this when it comes to bids. It should not have taken this long for us to know what's the outcome of the People's Way, and I don't think you can divorce that from decisions made by the intersection as well. So I would like to see those both come forward, but I just want to say thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for, again, continuously championing community should be driving this process, should be providing the plan and thus the layout that this body moves forward with.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Thank you, President Payne. I just, I want to get some clarity on, like, what are our options here? So with this community proposal, is the plan, if that is a proposal that's going to be put together, would that come through in the next term? Is that a next-term proposal? And then this concept layout, right now, we're not voting to support it or not, we're voting to discuss it, and we will have an option to vote it up or down. So I would like to get clarity on both of those things. One, like, what's the pathway for this community proposal? And then what does this vote do today? Am I right in saying it moves it forward and then we take an up or down vote to say we support the concept plan or we don't support the concept plan? And whoever can answer that?
Councilmember Cashman.
Thank you, President Payne. I can try to answer this. The proposal brought forward by the Community Visioning Council that will be presented at the CNI Committee on December 4 is a recommendation from community, but it won't necessarily be something that Public Works then adopts and brings forward as a concept layout, because they would have to do a lot of work to reconcile what's brought forward by the CVC into an engineered concept layout. And I know that there's many elements of it with regards to the underwater, underground infrastructure that would have to be reconciled, and I don't know the extent to which the proposal put forward by the CVC would actually be possible. And at the end of the day, the only thing that this council can vote on as far as a street reconstruction is something that our Public Works Department puts forward for us to vote on, and that is due to government structure. So that is, what the CVC brings forward is not going to necessarily translate into a street concept layout that the council will be able to vote on. And then the second part of your question is about what's before us today is a motion to put the open concept layout back on the table for the council to vote up or down on at the December 11 meeting.
Thank you. I think I'm going to just take some time to absorb that a little bit. Just frankly, I feel kind of frustrated and I feel kind of confused, just really honest, like, with every single person up on the dais, like, people that I feel more allied with, people maybe I'm not as allied with, however you want to put it, I do just want to say, like, we have to lean in to figure this out. And like, I would love, I don't, I don't support the open flexible. I haven't supported the open flexible plan. I wanted the pedestrian mall. And this community proposal, it sounds great. I don't know anything about it, but we need a pathway that shows us how we're going to get there. I'm struggling to see where, how we get, how we get there. And I'm also struggling to understand, like, is this charting a path for us to just wait another year before we do anything if that's what councilmembers want to move forward on? That's frustrating. That's confusing, not only for me, but for people that are in the area waiting for something to happen. And I think one thing that the incoming council member for the 8th Ward has shared with a number of people is that there isn't community consensus one way or another. So I really, I really am asking for leadership across the board from everyone to lean in and try to figure out what is our path forward. If we're going to move towards compromise, is there a path where we can actually have a tangible compromise so we can give something to the community? And if it's, if it's a path that's going to lead us into waiting another year before it's charted out, can we be transparent about that? Because that doesn't feel clear to me. And I'm not the council member that represents this part, and frankly, it feels very uncomfortable to speak about this in this way, because I never wanted to see cars go down George Floyd Square. I don't drive down George Floyd Square. But it, but it's just at a, at a point where I'm like, what is the direction that we're going at as a council? So that's an open question for anyone, but I feel like I haven't been really vocal in how I'm currently feeling about this and how we're, how we're steering the ship on this together. Because I think we all agree the community deserves to have nice things and a good plan. That's all I'll say.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Maybe I could ask the clerk for clarification. And thank you, Councilmember Chowdhury. Thank you for leaning in. In case we've lost track of this, I believe that this motion only does the opportunity of putting this on an agenda on December 11. City Clerk, is there any?
Vice President Chugtai, you're in queue for a point of order.
I'm so sorry. As the clerk is getting ready to answer that question, is the Public Works Director in the overflow room or something? I mean, can we, can we get him over here to be able to answer some basic questions that are being asked over here, and we're all attempting to, like, figure out a way to answer?
I can answer that. Unfortunately, he was in the overflow room but had to leave for another event. So as chair, I'll do my best to speak for, as chair of CNI, I'll do my best to speak for the department.
Sure. And I'm not trying to ask a technical question or clarification, I'm just asking from our end. Procedurally, I think all this does is put it on the agenda December 11. And so- And so as Councilmember Chowdhury is, you know, trying to get to, she's not trying to get to yes or no, she's saying, "This is an opportunity." But if we want to vote down even putting it on the next agenda, then I think that speaks volumes to the people living there.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
One thing I'll just add, I don't know if we're going to figure this out on December 11th. So I think that's something to be eyes wide open about, like, this is a massive concept plan, and like, if that gets voted down on December 11th, what happens after that to this concept plan and what happens for future proposals? Because that's a really likely scenario, that we still don't get anything done. Because there's, we don't have public works staff here, that's not their fault, right, scheduling, but there's also this future proposal that's coming forward. We're not clear on like, what the path is for bringing that forward or melding the things together, if that's a part of forming compromise. And we do have multiple community presentations coming at CNI. I think there's a pedestrian mall presentation, the CVC presentation, and then Unity Community, they all have like 10 minutes each. So what happens December 11th if we don't have anything into this concept plan?
Mr. Carl, are you going to?
Mr. President, I can attempt to speak just generally to what are our options, what are the timelines, and what happens after December 11th. So as everyone hopefully is aware, December 11th is the last regular meeting of the city council for this year. It's also the last meeting of this term. That has special implications. At the end of a year, things roll over into the next year. At the end of a term, things die. So anything that's in queue that is unresolved won't move forward. The council will have to reintroduce and re-refer in the next term through its next committee's structure, any items that are unresolved at the end of this year. So number one, there's one full cycle left in this term in which this body could make a decision. I understand there are two proposals what I'll call in queue. I've heard today, there is a potential for a third, I'll put the third aside and deal again with the first two. The first one that staff brought forward, and I'm not even going to venture a guess, it was before this two-year term, and I think it was before the prior two-year term. There was a study done by Public Works about the underlying infrastructure that Councilmember Cashman mentioned that are, you know, beneath the paved roads at the intersection of George Floyd Square, that ultimately came forward as a proposal for a flexible, open, mixed-use concept plan. That plan worked its way through the council's process ultimately until February of this year, at which point it was ready for a final vote of approval, but this body intervened and said, "No, we're not ready to make that final decision," and they put that plan on file with the clerk, as I've already explained. Meantime, a second proposal has been proposed to the body, by the body, which was for a pedestrian mall design at that intersection. As I mentioned, that is simply a conceptual idea. It has not been studied. There are very, very strict statutory requirements about when the city and its own local powers can close an intersection and pursue a pedestrian mall, all of which the city attorney can speak to, and I'm pretty positive Councilmember Cashman can explain for us as well. But, but those things that are required have been under an evaluation process by the professional staff. The report by the professional staff is set to come forward in the next cycle to the CNI Committee. So that proposal could come forward still this term to get, at best, a "we like that", but there is not time in this term to pursue it further. When you have everything lined up, as you all know, to get an ordinance done, to do a pedestrian mall requires an ordinance, to do the concept plan of a mixed-use design does not. So adding an ordinance to the pedestrian mall adds complexity. To do an ordinance, and that's when you have at least seven councilmembers fully in alignment, you have a written document already in front of you, and it's already been introduced, given its first reading and referred to committee, is going to take two months. We don't have two months left this year, and we don't have an ordinance drafted on the pedestrian mall. So if it is the will of the body after the CNI Committee next, in the next cycle, to continue to pursue, assuming we still have the authority under the state statute that all of those requirements have been met, that is a proposal that will have to be carried over the next term. There is no way for that to advance this year. And if the concept plan comes forward, so the motion that Jenkins has put forward, to be clear, does nothing today. All it does, if approved, is tell me, put that on the agenda for December 11th so that you, the body, can decide. That's literally the only effect of her motion. Keeps it in play, if you will, for this term. I explained the Jenkins motion, I've explained the original mixed-use flexible open design from staff, I've explained the pedestrian mall. What I heard today is there is a proposal yet to be fleshed out from community groups. If that proposal were to come forward and is being presented as a, as an idea by one or more community groups at the CNI Infrastructure Committee meeting in the next cycle, the only way for that to move forward is for it to be introduced by a council member, basic legislative process. So a council member would have to say, "I like the idea, and I'm going to own it." I'm going to have to work with the staff, as Councilmember Cashman indicated. There is no mechanism for the community to put that forward, it has to be authored by a council member. The council member working with the professional staff would have to address all of the very technical and complex issues of infrastructure. And if it were to be a proposal that involved a pedestrian mall, it would further be subject to all of the statutory requirements. So the idea of the community-based plan is certainly not going to happen this term and would have to come forward in the next term.
The part that I needed the answer for as well was, what if the concept plan on December 11th, if this is taken off ICE, is voted down?
Through the Chair, after the President, I'll say, if the plan is put on the December 11th and the will of the majority of the body is to vote it down, then it gets defeated, just like any other thing that comes forward before the body and is voted up or down. In a new term, it could be brought back because the significant change is we have a new body.
Councilmember Chavez.
The last thing I'll say is that, yes, I talked about the vote that I got at George Floyd Square in the Ward 9 part, but we also just had a mayoral, mayoral election. The George Floyd Square community includes four different precincts, some in Ward 8, one in Ward 9, and Senator Omar Fonte won all four precincts with supporting the pedestrian plaza concept plan and not supporting the mayor's vision. So if we just, if we want to be very clear, we just had an election where people voted for the candidate that did not support the mayor's vision, which is what we're trying to bring out of ICE today. So yes, not only did I just talk about the Ward 9, but we had an election who someone very clearly was against this proposal being brought forward and won all four precincts. So I just want to be very clear on that elections, people get to vote and, and go towards specific directions, so.
Seeing no further discussion, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
No.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
No.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Nay.
Vice President Chugtai.
Nay.
President Payne.
Nay.
There are eight ayes and five nays.
That item carries and consideration of this item will return to us at a future meeting. The next order of business is unfinished business. We have one item today, which is the consideration of 35th Street and 36th Street Reconstruction Project Layout Approval and Variance Request. I will see if CNI Chair Cashman has an update on this item or wants to make a motion.
Thank you, President Payne. I will move this item for approval. We have had some conversations with Public Works and both Councilmember Jenkins and Councilmember Chavez have been involved in trying to understand what the process will be for this street reconstruction project. And the point that was unclear was that, was about the bike facility in between Blaisdell and Third Avenue on 35th Street. And the, the question that remains is about the Public Works going to the state to get a variance for our municipal state aid requirement. And I do believe that it's best that we move this forward as is and rely on Public Works going through their process to get the variance that they'll be requesting to continue designing that bike facility portion of the street reconstruction project. Thank you.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Councilmember Cashman, Chair Cashman of the Committee, CNI Committee, for that explanation. In conversations with community, you know, I think people are still concerned about those bike paths, but also really deeply concerned about the bridges on 35th and 36th Street, which represent a serious departure from ADA regulations for bridges, as well as the lighting on those bridges are significantly underwhelming, if you will, and creates a safety hazard for people trying to cross those bridges. And so, you know, I've been advocating for those bridges to be replaced for minimum of 20 years. This would probably not replace those bridges, but we really hope that we can convince MNDOT to redeck those bridges to create more safety for pedestrians, for people using wheelchairs, bikers, et cetera. So again, it merely, voting today allows the Public Works staff to submit a variance so that we can continue our work, but really, there are some design challenges that we hope that the community ideas can be incorporated in the next phase of designing how we treat 35th and 36th Street. Thank you.
Councilmember Cashman has moved approval of this item. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Payne. My office received a lot of feedback on this issue from residents, and we've been in fairly contact with a number of them as well, along with Councilmember Jenkins. I want to thank all of them for their thoughtful engagement on this project. We've also had some meaningful conversations with Public Works staff, so I want to thank them all for their work and care on this issue. I share with residents a lot of the concerns they've expressed about some of the stickier issues around this project, specifically around the shared use path. I appreciate Public Works and what they told us about their commitment to continuously work to make improvements as we move towards construction beginning. My office is particularly committed to working with all stakeholders going forward to ensure this project makes streets safe as possible for everyone, be it them walking, rolling, biking, or in a motor vehicle. No matter the outcome of this, though, we know that 35th and 36th Street will be safer once this project is complete, more than it is right now, and I really look forward to making sure that improvements happen throughout this next phase to make sure that we can actually keep our community members safe on this corridor.
Seeing no one else left in queue, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the motion is adopted. Our next order of business is a request for closed session. Before I recognize the city attorney and recess for closed session, I'll ask if there are any announcements from council members. Councilmember Wansley.
Thank you, President Payne. This is just related to some work that I definitely intend to, we're going next session, but I think earlier this morning, all of us saw the media announcement about Waymo, which is a California-based corporation that offers self-driving or autonomous ride-sharing services, will begin test rides here in Minneapolis. Shortly after the media broke around that story, there was also an email sent out to council from the administration that Waymo informed them last week that they will be testing downtown and move through the rest of the city over a period of time. I do want to note my frustration that the administration sat on this information and essentially allowed the media to tell the public and the council about this pursuit of automation cars being tested in our streets. There was a need for proactive communication with the public around this, and this is coming from someone who has worked on a multitude of technological or AI initiatives. Even when I've had reariness about them, I've moved them through a public legislative process so that we all could receive feedback and for us to understand what regulations would be, needed to put, be put in place to make sure that the implementation of these services are being done so with the public's well-being and interests in mind. That did not happen in this case, and it should have happened. So I at least wanted to assure the public that my office intends to make sure that we do have a formal legislative and engagement process, as well as explore potential regulatory actions that we can take in regards to the testing of self-driving cars here in Minneapolis that Waymo plans to do or enact with the support of Mayor Frye, and I look forward to sharing more about those details in the coming weeks.
Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say happy birthday to Aaron on our tech team. We can't see Aaron right now because he's running the camera. I threatened him that somebody would probably embarrass him by singing, so somebody can do it, not me. No. Happy birthday, Aaron.
Who's singing? Who's singing?
Happy birthday to...
Oh, 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 oh. All right. With that, we've completed all items on our agenda and will now consider a request for closed session, which is to receive a briefing on the litigation matter listed on the agenda. Before I move to close the meeting, I'll recognize the city attorney to provide the legal basis for the requested closed session. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Council President, council members. The next item on the agenda is the case of Cheryl Fraser et al. versus City of Minneapolis. Your lawyers wish to provide a briefing to the council on this litigation matter. Accordingly, under the Minnesota Open Meeting Law, Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, subdivision 3B, the council may upon a proper motion close the meeting for the purposes of attorney-client communication as permitted by the attorney-client privilege. In considering the motion, the council should weigh the right of the public to know what its government is doing against the need of the city to preserve the confidentiality of its discussions with its attorneys.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I move to close our public meeting as authorized under the open meeting law, specifically Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, for the purpose of receiving a briefing on the litigation matter of Cheryl Fraser et al. versus City of Minneapolis. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Chowdhury.
Aye.
Councilmember Cashman.
Aye.
Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vitah.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Kosky.
Aye.
Councilmember Wansley.
Aye.
Vice President Chugtai.
Aye.
President Payne.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries. For the viewing public, I will note that the broadcast for this meeting will continue, and the council will reconvene in public after we've concluded the closed session. Thank you. Tech team, we're ready? The time is now 12:23, and the city council has reconvened an open session following our closed session. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll to prove the presence of a quorum.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Pomisano?
Present.
Councilmember Chowdhury is absent. Councilmember Cashman?
Present.
Councilmember Osman is absent. Councilmember Rainville?
Present.
Councilmember Chavez?
Present.
Councilmember Vitah?
Present.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
Councilmember Kosky?
Present.
Councilmember Wonsley?
Present.
Vice President Shugtai is absent. President Payne?
Present.
There are 10 members present.
Let the record reflect, we have a quorum, and I will recognize Councilmember Vitah.
Thank you, President Payne. I'd like to move that all claims, including any claims for attorney's fees and costs asserted in the litigation matter, Cheryl A. Frazier as treasurer for the next of kin of Lanille Lamont-Frazier, deceased, versus the City of Minneapolis, Hennepin County District Court, be settled in the amount of $475,000 payable to the next of kin for Lanille Lamont-Frazier and/or their attorneys via persons and/or entities as determined by the court's anticipated distribution order and conditioned upon the court approval from Fund Org 069001500100145400. The city attorney's office is authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate this settlement and dismissal.